Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen for November 28, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment, Mr. Haggerty?
You know I always do, Mr. Chair.
You do?
But this one's quick, I promise.
You say that every week.
Yeah, I know. Well, I just want to extend it to everyone in Abington. I hope everyone had a very safe, healthy, and happy Thanksgiving and looking forward to the Christmas and Hanukkah season coming up. But friendly reminder of the hazard mitigation survey available on the town website. Residents and property owners are encouraged to participate in a survey about hazard mitigation. It's right on the front page of the town website.
Well, thank you.
You're gonna start over?
No, I'm not gonna start over. But I (laugh) no, I'll friendly reminder of the hazard mitigation survey available on the town website. Residents and property owners are encouraged to participate in a survey about hazard mitigation. It's right on the front page of the town website, scroll down to the bottom. The towns of Abington, East Bridgewater, Easton, and Stoughton are collaborating with residents and stakeholders on an update of the town's natural hazard mitigation plan, also known as HMP. The effort relies on stakeholder and public input to come up with local strategies to mitigate natural hazards, reduce vulnerability, and adapt to our adapt to our changing climate. The results of this planning process will inform future town spending on hazard mitigation and climate adaption. This survey is an opportunity for you as residents to share your concerns about natural hazards and their impacts to our town and what you think our town should do to reduce vulnerability to natural hazards and the impacts of climate change. The survey is also available in a paper copy at the senior center, the Abington Public Library, and Town Hall. Boxes boxes for completed surveys are all are in these locations as well. The survey will be open through December 31, 2022, so New Year's Eve. That's all I have for announcements, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Kevin?
Nothing.
Tim?
No, sir.
And I have nothing. Anyone in the audience have anything to say about anything on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to vote to approve the minutes from November 14, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Introduction of new police officers. Chief?
Good evening. Thank you. Just wanted to take a moment tonight and introduce our newest officers to the APD. These officers graduated from the Northern Essex Community College Police Academy on October 7 of this year. They all started their field training program on October 11, and they'll remain in their field training program until approximately mid-January, at which point they'll be assigned to a shift and authorized for solo patrol. All of these officers are Abington residents, which means they each have a vested interest in serving this community. Would you gentlemen stand up and I'll introduce you? We have Officer Sean Flannery. Officer Flannery is a 2004 graduate of North Quincy High School. 2013, he attended the EMS Academy in Quincy and was certified as an EMT. Went on to work for Fallon Ambulance for a period of time as an EMT. And prior to joining the APD, he worked as a control representative for SS and C Technologies. We have Officer Robert Givasi Jr., 2017 graduate of Archbishop Williams High School. Robert attended Massa Slay Community College for a year before transferring to Westfield State University. And prior to joining the APD, he was a full-time student at Westfield State, pursuing his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Next, we have Officer Andrew Rizendis, 2008 graduate of Portsmouth High School in Rhode Island. In 2012, he earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice from Curry College. Worked for as a police officer for the Mass Bay Community College for a period of time before joining the APD. He worked his last seven years as a police officer for the Bunker Hill Community College Police Department. And last but not least, Officer Ryan Francis, 2012 graduate of the South Shore Vocational Technical High School. 2013, he went on to attend Bridgewater State College for a year before transferring to UMass Dartmouth. 2017, he received a Bachelor of Science degree from UMass Dartmouth in management information systems. And prior to joining the APD, he's worked the last couple of years as a corrections officer for the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department. We're excited to have these officers on board, and we look forward to seeing the positive impact they'll have on on our community. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Representative Sullivan. She has some citations for these officers.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Board. It is an honor to be here. Thank you for having us. I do have some citations for our new officers. And before I begin, I just want to say every bishop would like to be a cardinal. A little pun there. Graduating from Colonel Spelman, it's always been our arch rivals and archies, so I had to throw that in. All jokes, all jokes, I promise. Exactly, right? So I do have a few citations here for all four of you. I've met you during the road race that we had in Abington. You guys, I think we're in the middle of the academy at that time, so you guys were all ready for the 5K. You did a great job. I think you beat me and several others, including Rick. I think he's in the audience tonight. But all seriousness, I want to begin by saying thank you. Thank you for standing up to the plate and wanting to become officers. You know, Abington is a great town, like you all know. You live here. I grew up here. I'm a wife of a police officer. My husband serves over in the city of Brockton, so I know what it is and what it takes for you and your family each and every day you go to work. So thank you so much. And you will always have the support from a lot of us residents in the town of Abington. So I do have a citation for all four of you. I'm just gonna read one, just to preserve time, because they all say the same thing. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offices sincere congratulations to all four of you in recognition of your commitment to protect and serve the town of Abington as an officer of the Abington Police Department. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this 28th day of November 2022 at the State House of Boston, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and offered by your representative, Allison Sullivan. So congratulations and thank you so much, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you again for your time.
Appreciate you. Good luck, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck, guys. Thank you.
Okay.
You guys don't have to stay.
Yeah, you can leave.
Despite what they told you.
Discussion on disposition of options for North School and Center School. Scott, what do we have?
So I think we're at that next point. We do have some, or at least through our consultant who worked with us on community outreach on these projects, has suggested that we do have some interest in these school buildings. And the concept that we put forward when we were discussing the Center School, which had a reuse of the property with 12 units, like one-bedroom units of housing, no real change to the footprint, no change to the structure other than any upgrades needed, and returning most of the property back to the town, including, in that particular case, the ball fields and the wooded areas. Though that concept seems to have be of interest to at least a couple of different organizations. So my question to this board is, is how do we want to proceed? I think I had mentioned my thought would be, do we want to do any further outreach on this? Do we want to put a request for proposals together and put this property out to bid? I did say, you know, earlier I had mentioned that maybe, you know, I want to do a little research on exactly what was authorized in the past by town meeting and see if this is something that we want to bring to town meeting. At the very least, I think if we're going to go forward, we probably want to go to town meeting to get some money for the consultants to help out as far as putting bid docs together, reviewing them with this board. I think we'd obviously want to get get it right the first time, make sure that, you know, everything's included with what we want and that it's the best thing for the town. And then the other option is, obviously, if this board decides that that's not the way to go, then we'll be looking to put a warrant article together to get money, at least for the first part of it, which would be engineering to look into the demolition costs of the of the.
Do you have an estimate on what it would cost to engineering a demo?
The prices for demo that were done prior, back when, you know, probably three years ago, were over would bring us somewhere over a million and a half to $2 million.
Each?
At in this current environment, yes. It was, I think, just $750,000 back then, just on hazmat removal, that would be per building. So that, you know, probably, you know, that price has gone up, but the first thing we would do is we would have to bring on an engineer, which would be somewhere, you know, probably upwards of $300,000 to go and assist in putting that documentation together, finding out exactly what the hazmat is that's going to be removed, how we would want it removed, bid it, and do construction administration during that. So that, you know, again, it'd probably be two different articles, one at this year's meeting, put it out to bid. And then the other option is, again, you know, if we feel it is the right project for us, then we could take the conceptual drawings that we had put together when we did the, you know, the initial community outreach and and look to put 12 units of housing into each building. There'd be an affordable component. The developer would have to file these as a 40B projects. They would, you know, the difference being that they would be supported by the town, so the process would be a lot quicker. But they would still have to go in front of the Board of Appeals and file with Mass Housing to do that. You know, we would be able to put restrictions if we wanted to go forward. We put restrictions on it as far as, you know, there may be whatever that percentage is that is affordable, we may want preference to veterans, we may want preference to seniors, we may want preference to folks who live in town. There are certain restrictions, but we, again, we'd have to talk with our consultant on that, there's certain things that just aren't allowed to be done.
I know, because I question I had questions from residents about, because I know from the survey, we heard from a lot of seniors that they were looking for subsidized senior housing. So is that something that is being presented to the developers?
Everything's on the table. At this point, nothing's being presented, so that's where we're at now, is coming up with that decision on what is going to be presented.
If we were to put out an RFP, then we would, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would be putting it out there and asking people to come back with their ideas.
Well, I think, no, I think in this particular case, we, I think we have to establish.
Well, Center School, we definitely want to establish that it's on that footprint.
Right.
But I think North School, I mean, that that should just be open and.
But I think it, you know, it does seem like that the two broad projects could go together. And if we, you know, if the restrictions were that, you know, a percentage of the or the affordable component to it be restricted to seniors only at Center School, we could put that in there. We have the ability to put whatever we want. Just keeping in mind that whatever restrictions that we do put on or however we decide to craft this will obviously limit the interest or any, you know, I would not expect anyone to likely won't pay the town for this. That, you know, at best, in a situation like this, there's usually, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if the successful bidder was asking for some sort of a subsidy from the town.
They would get the buildings for nothing and then ask for subsidy also. And the alternative is, like Scott said, we go to town meeting, ask for $3 million and tear them down and keep the property.
And and again, you know, when I put that that number as a guess, but, you know, considering it's not just hazmat removal, but it's removal of the buildings, cleanup of the property, the there's a lot of each has asphalt, and then it's whatever that reuse is going to be, that if we decided to just remove the buildings, if it's going to be parking, then there's going to be, you know, an area that's left for parking or the park and accessible area, and then the decisions on how we want that to look when we're done. What is the ultimate? It's obviously, we don't want to just tear buildings down and leave holes in the ground. So there'll be a cost associated with that also.
So I guess another question I have, so for us, for the Board of Selectmen, should we set a set a timeline for what we want to set for these developers potentially to what we're looking for on these properties?
Yeah, RFP will have it.
That would be laid out.
Yeah, I think it's what we what I need and what I think we want to decide is what we want.
To do.
The final project to look like and what we want to do, meaning.
Well, I think the first question is, does the board want to put out an RFP or does the board want to keep the property?
What's a timeframe to, if we were to turn them into housing, what do you think a timeframe would be?
We wouldn't have a, you know.
Five years?
Yeah. It'd be, it is a process. I'd have to go to town meeting either way and get money from the consultant to help put this together. And then it'll be at least a year, probably for development and turnaround and selection. And then that person, that developer, would have it probably a year of permitting, just through the town, through the normal process.
What would be a timeframe to demo them?
Wouldn't be much, it'd be a couple of years. We'd still, again, we'd have to go to town meeting for engineering. They'd have to draw up their plans. We'd have to come up with whatever our final plan's going to be, and then we'd go out to bid and have to go to town meeting for that money. And then it would be hiring a developer or a demolition company, whatever the case may be, to follow through. Either way, it's nothing's happening right away, but.
You're talking years?
It's it's gonna be a couple of year process for anything.
What's it cost us to upkeep those buildings now? Is it gonna, is that figure gonna go up for talking years?
Well, I mean, you know, there's nothing worse than an empty building, an abandoned building is, you know, it's an attractive nuisance to kids who want to break in or it's, you know, or create graffiti or, you know, it's just, it's not that we're gonna pump money, we're not gonna put a roof on it, and the roof's leaking.
Can we restrict the entire project to senior housing?
We can put whatever we want for a restriction on it, but it's going to make a huge difference in the attractiveness of the project.
Who's gonna want to bid on it?
Okay, so that being said, we are still keeping true to the residents want to make sure we're preserving the footprint, the 13 acres of the Center School property.
I if if you wanted me to tell you what I think we should do tomorrow, it would be take the Center School property and the North School property, put the buildings out, have everything that is considered, you know, especially, you know, it's easier to visualize the Center School, I think, because we've looked at it so much, but the wooded area, the ballparks, the the, you know, all that, and actually, all the green area would be restricted to no disturbance.
Yeah, keep it intact.
The that the the whole back lot leading down and all the way, including the ball field, would be donated back to the town. Same thing at the North School, is we would keep only what you need for parking for the new project and everything else donated back to the town. The project, as we saw, the schematic would allow for up to 12 units in each. And other than maybe allowing some physical changes for ADA compliance, I think we could keep it that way. So if we put it out like that and see what happens, you know, and then, again, there'd be a minimum of 25% of the units. We could ask for more, but we could say a minimum of 25% of the units would be affordable, and we could ask for whatever restrictions we want to put on it. That's where, you know, again, those restrictions make it difficult. Affordable is affordable, and a one-bedroom unit is just, you know, naturally attractive to a certain demographic. Mass Housing isn't going to like the idea that we're doing all one-bedroom units. They want to see a mix when you do affordability, so, you know, we have some issues.
I would like to do the restriction to the footprint at Center School, but I think to make it more attractive, I would just say whatever they wanted to do at North School. Because a developer may do them both, because, okay, we're gonna do only 12 units at Center School, and they're probably not going to make any money on that for quite a while. But if they had free rein at North School, that they could maybe tear the building down, maybe do more, maybe add to the building or something like that, it would be different. So I would like to do Center School restricted to the footprint, but North School, just leave it open and see what we get for proposals. I think we're restricting it too much by just doing the footprint on both properties. And I definitely want to do just the footprint at Center, but I don't think it's as important at North School.
If we did that, and we we could then review the, will we receive?
Right, yeah, we don't have to. A wood.
You can also, I mean, yeah, there's always, we'll always have the ability to reject. We'll, if we do put it out, we do need to have a clear sense on what we want from the developer that would make it more advantageous. So what is it that we're ultimately looking for that's likely to make that developer more successful than the next developer? So things, you know, we need to, we need to have a way that, in our mind, if we say we picking this project over this project, we have to be able to quantify that, and they should know what that is ahead of time.
After, like, so we, the town, we reviewed the Center School, we did a feasibility study, we we got the information, what we can and can't do, or what the residents want to do at Center School. I'm wondering, and that was a process that we did to make sure that this is done right, we're making sure that we're doing what the town wants and what the residents want. I'm wondering, why are we rushing the North School then, if we're just lumping it together?
It's been like 10 years. Yeah, I don't think we're rushing.
Well, first of all, like I said, I don't believe a developer is only gonna want to do 12 units or six, whatever the number is, at Center School and donate all the land back. It just, in today's market, with what those buildings need, it's not feasible for a development.
But the review that we've done for Center School, why wouldn't we do the same for North School? That's that that's my question.
Because it's gonna be similar to school, just my opinion. I think it's gonna be similar. Why waste the money? Like, what difference do you expect to hear?
Well, the environment is different in those two areas.
Right, which is why I think it was more important that we did it on Center School, because we had all the land we wanted, I think all five of us wanted to protect that land.
Yes.
At North School, is there anything we're looking to protect?
I don't, I think we're just reviewing of of traffic or town resources.
They'll have to, that's all part of the permitting process.
That's all part of the permitting and proposals.
Not really, I couldn't speak.
We make, I'm sorry.
I couldn't really speak on, like, water or traffic, great, that's not my expertise, but they they have to go through that process that they are gonna have to talk to the experts and get the permit as far as North School goes.
And and I will say that, you know, one thing we did say all along the process, starting, you know, when we started talking about this with the Affordable Housing Trust, was we wanted to start with the Center School because they were sister schools, and we expected that one, that whatever was gonna work from there, if it worked, we would do it with the North School. So it was our intention, you know, throughout. There's, again, like we said, there's always that ability that if we put something out there, I mean, it's, you know, this board will have another chance or two to look at anything that is the ultimate, you know, final document before it goes out to bid. People will still have an opportunity to weigh in on it. And then ultimately, when something's approved, they go, like I said, they go through the normal permitting process where there'd be, whether, you know, Board of Appeals meetings and/or Planning Board meetings. So people have their chance to make their opinions known at that time, too.
It's been so long, I, we gotta not sit on our hands, we just gotta, we gotta keep moving forward. We're not making any decision on tonight on what the final project will look like. But you heard Scott, we're talking five years down the line before we're done.
Yeah.
Those buildings aren't gonna get in better shape in the next five years, it's only gonna get worse, and it's dangerous that we have them there now.
Yeah, I think we put out an RFP and see what happens.
I mean, we'll see it, and then we can agree or reject it at that time. I mean, I don't think any more studies or any more throwing any more money at it's gonna change anything.
If we put another committee together, it's gonna be a year, two years before we get something back from them. Now, we could possibly be seven years out before something's done. I mean, I think it's, if a developer took those, I think it's probably close to five years by the time everything's finished.
So what do we need to do?
Well, I think Scott needs to check town meetings to see what we're authorized to do. Tim and I think that town meeting did authorize to.
I think it was 2019 authorized. I know we did authorize the Board of Selectmen to to split the Center School land and/or sell the whole thing and and sell it. And I believe North School was part of that, that warrant article, if not, it was the next one.
So if that's done, then what we would need tonight, assuming that's correct, and I I believe it is also, but assuming that's correct, we would need a motion tonight for Scott to move forward with the process to do an RFP.
RFP on both properties.
Do we need to be specific on the RFP or no?
No.
I would, I will bring the RFP back to this board well before it, more than once, likely, before it goes out to bid.
Have the motion be to Scott stop working on it, and the RFP would be approved by us.
So I'll make that motion right now, depending on town meetings.
I'll second it.
Past town meeting, but.
What is the timeframe for the RFP?
I'll check with my with the consultant. It may be, depending on how busy they are, we're probably looking right around town meeting time anyways before.
We'd get it back before town meeting? I mean, it wouldn't be able to.
It probably wouldn't be ready, and then they're, depending on the cost associated with it, I may have to wait until the, you know, some sort of a special within the annual to fund whatever we need for it, so. But I'll have a better, you know, before the 12th, I'll have a better feeling from what the consultant feels like we can do.
So there's a motion. Did someone second it?
Yes, I did.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, the purchase of Zero Orchard Lane. Want to explain this one to us?
Yeah, quite simply, this is, I have to go get you the, as you recall, at town meeting, we we were authorized to purchase Zero Orchard Lane, and this is really just you guys voting to sign the quitclaim deed. And you'll be able to read it in the motion, but it's pursuant to the vote taken under Article 5 of the 2022 special town meeting to acquire the property located on Orchard Lane from Gregory O'Neil. The said property to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission under the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, see and to execute and authorize the chair to execute on behalf of the Board any and all acceptances, certificates, settlements, statements, and any and all other. settlements, statements, and any and all other documents necessary. So you just need to make, just the top one, the Conservation Commission will be needed later this week to do the same thing because it's going into their care and custody. So just need you to formalize it. And this will allow us, we'll send the money over and do the transfer.
So I'd like to make a motion pursuant to the vote taken under Article Five of the September 27th, 2022 Special Town Meeting, to acquire the property located on Orchard Lane from Gregory O'Neil. Said property to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission under the provisions of General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight, C, and to execute and to authorize the Chair to execute on behalf of the Board any and all acceptances, certificates, settlements, statements, and any and all other documents necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing acquisition.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number five, we have an update from Adam Gunn, our Veteran Services agent.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'll just take a few minutes of your time today, talk about a few updates from the Veterans' Office. The most, the first one I'm going to talk about is the one I'm most excited about, a new Veteran Service Assistant, Martha.
Hi. That's my boss. So thank you so much for having us and allowing us to be a part of this meeting tonight. As he said, my name is Martha, I'm the new assistant. So I'll primarily be working with the program called Chapter 115. So that's normally geared towards low-income veterans or dependents. And the need-based program, it's dependent on income and assets. So there's different limits depending on whether you're single or you're not, or how many people are in the household. So there's a lot of math associated with it, but essentially, we always encourage, like, whether you think you qualify or not, the best way to figure it out is to just try. So our offices are not joined yet, soon to come. So I'm downstairs, like, if you walk inside, the first door on the right, Adam's upstairs, you can visit either one of our offices if you have any questions, or you can call us. So essentially, we just want to make sure that if there's anyone that needs help, that they feel like they can get it. Like, not just to sit there and just suffer alone, because sometimes it's hard to ask for help, you know, because it's not easy. But considering how much, like, the veteran community has contributed to, you know, our freedom, it's only right for us to be able to give back to them. So that's essentially what we do. So whether we can do it with a monthly benefit or not, there's also, like, medical assistance that's provided, too. So some way, somehow, we can probably work something out, but again, we're just here to let you guys know and everybody know that we're here and, you know, there's people out there that are ready to support you. So just reach out and we'll be here for you. And that's all that I got for tonight.
Thank you, Martha. Love Martha.
She's been with, with Veteran Services since August 16th of this year. Very welcome addition. We recently had the Veterans Celebration. We had 75 veterans show up to the Council on Aging on November 9th. Thanks to the support of Amy Barrett and her incredible staff at the Council on Aging, we had 32 nonprofits, community groups, and veteran-friendly businesses set up for information tables for the first hour. And then Richie and Michelle, the staff at the Council on Aging, put an incredible meal together. The high school band came out and played patriotic music as they were getting out of their vehicles. We had all the department heads, Scott right at the entrance clapping when they came in. The middle school students came and read poems that they had written. The elementary students had all written cards that we had on every table that they came in to sit down with. We passed the leftover cards to Colony Center and to the VA. We had Cream here in Abington who came in and donated dessert. Susan at Cake Connections came in, gave us a cake, and then she also made 60-to-go cupcakes so each one of the veterans could take cupcakes home. Project 351 with our high school, Hannah Tyrell and Jack Regan from Project 351 went to local businesses in the area. And we had over 30 donations of gifts that we were able to give away to the veterans that showed up that day. So thank you to all those community groups, the businesses, and the volunteers that supported and made this possible. It was an incredible event, so thank you. Veteran stories, our office is also part of the Abington High School. We're still trying to get veterans that would like to have their story told. We have students that want to sit down and interview veterans, hear about their stories, and then write about them. So if you're interested in having your story told, or interested in telling a story for another veteran, please reach out to our office. There's still Toys for Tots box located in Town Hall, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. Those are going to be around until December 17th, so there's still time to bring a toy. The monthly Veterans Breakfast is still happening in Martin's Restaurant. Around 60 veterans are showing up every month to Martin's on the first Wednesday of each month. The half of the restaurant that Freddie Villa allows us to take over and use, has only has seats for 35 veterans. We fill those up every single month since March, and he takes the other, you know, the total 60-plus veterans that walk in that day, and he gives free meals to every single one of them for service of our country. Recently, the Abington American Legion and the Abington VFW have partnered together to, every three months, give a financial donation to Martin's Restaurant in their support for what he's doing for our veterans. I just want to thank Martin's Restaurant and the local businesses that are doing so much for our veterans. Please get out there and support our local businesses that support our veterans. And then we'll be bringing a new article to the next town meeting for a Veteran Tax Work Off Abatement Program. The Veteran Tax Work Off Program would be open to any veterans or the spouse of a disabled veteran or a deceased veteran. And there's no age restrictions like there is with the Senior Tax Write-off, or the Senior Tax Work Off. So anyone who owns a property and pays real estate tax at the town of Abington, the program would allow a veteran or spouse to work with our office and log their hours and earn up to 1,500 off their property tax credit. This would be paid at the rate of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Minimum Wage, minus the withholdings, of course. But this would allow our office to do a lot more for our veterans, obviously help them financially for those who need, and hopefully accomplish more future goals and dreams. Lastly, speaking of dreams, one of the visions of the future for the Veteran Services is to someday have a veteran transportation vehicle available to Abington veterans and widows who need transportation to and from medical appointments. With the Tax Work Off Abatement Program, hopefully, we could use the Abatement Program, if it gets approved, and/or assign volunteers to schedule, to volunteer on certain days. I've had many people come and tell me they would be absolutely willing to support a program like this. It's a long road to accomplish something like this. I'm scheduled to be mentored by a couple other nearby local towns, as well as the DAV, who has a great ride program and works all over the country giving rides to veterans. Shortly before Veterans Day, we found a vehicle that's going to be donated to Veteran Services Office. It's a 2014 MV1 with only 18,000 miles on it. An MV1 is a mobility ventures vehicle and was built for one purpose. That's a wheelchair-accessible vehicle made for transportation. There isn't even a front passenger seat on it. There's an extended, either eight-foot ramp or a shorter ramp mode that comes out of the outside of the vehicle with the push of a button. There's two seats in the back. Rockland Veteran Services currently received a brand-new donated vehicle, so they no longer have use for this vehicle that they were currently running, currently running a transportation program through. So again, it's a long road to get this up and running, but it's a future goal. The vehicle is currently in progress in being donated over to the town of Abington in our office. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have for tonight.
I'd just like to mention, I was in Martin's Restaurant on a Wednesday when it was not the Veterans Wednesday. And this gentleman walked in and asked about the free breakfast, and the waitress said, "It's not today." And Fred Villa was there and said, "Sit down and order what you want." Even, even on the day that it's not, Fred takes care of people, so.
He does.
He's a good asset to this town.
He really is. When we first started doing this and the word first started getting out about the Veterans Breakfast, he would have 5:30 in the morning, he'd have vets showing up already, he heard about a free breakfast, and he still took care of them, even before the door opened. He would bring them in and cook them a meal, so.
If there was another organization or business owners in town that wanted to donate to Martin's Restaurant to help the cost in this, are they okay to reach out to your office?
Absolutely. He may try and turn you down like he did the VFW and the Legion, but absolutely.
But that's why if they call you, you're.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Anything else, Rod?
No questions.
Adam, you're doing a great job, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Al.
Appreciate it. Okay.
Welcome aboard, Martha.
Yes. Discussion and vote to consent to KP Law representation of the Socio-Vocational Regional, South Shore Regional Vocational School District. What's that all about, Scott?
Well, as you know, or should be aware, KP Law represents General Counsel for the town of Abington. And they've recently been requested to represent South Shore Regional Vocational School District School Committee on some legal items. And as a requirement, they need permission, or KP Law is seeking permission from this board, just because it's, I don't see a problem with it. I don't, obviously, I can't foresee everything, but I don't foresee an issue where our legal paths would be so crossed that this would become a problem. And if it did, certainly, we could avail ourselves of other counsel, or they could.
So do you need a vote for that?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion on this?
I think the motion could just simply be that you consent to KP Law representation of both Abington and the Socio-Voc tax school district.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, what everyone waits for.
Sign this. And after this gets signed, can you maybe get that red folder to work its way back? Did you ever sign this one?
That's what's in the red folder.
Are you sure that you don't have a D in there?
No, we.
The D to what, the town?
Are we selling the town?
We just sold the town. We have now West Rockland.
West Rockland.
West Rockland. Sorry, man. Send that down and get it back.
All right, so, like I said, the most anticipated.
This is the part we've all been waiting for.
Part of the whole meeting.
So the Fire Department is currently experiencing some mechanical issues to other three town ambulances. One has an engine issue. It appears that it's covered under the warranty, but it's awaiting parts, so it's unavailable until those parts come in. Our second ambulance is having issues with a computer chip. And these are both fairly new ambulances, so it's kind of a surprise that we're having these problems, but both issues do seem to be covered under warranty, but it's just unfortunate they're both out of service. They've been borrowing ambulances from other towns. County Bridgewater actually has generously agreed to loan us a spare ambulance for now. The Fire Chief and I are going to actually work on preparing an article for the upcoming annual town meeting to begin the process of replacing our third ambulance, which is the oldest one. We expect that to cost somewhere around $400,000. They're, like everything else, difficult to get right now. It's probably a long process, but we'd like to start it this year at the annual. After a long and exhaustive search, our DPW Director, John Stone, has finally been able to secure a bucket truck for the town. You might recall, this was an item that was authorized by town meeting back in April. The old bucket truck had had to be put out of service due to the many mechanical issues. So you'll likely see the new truck and their crew out trimming some branches, changing lights, repairing signs. They'll be swapping out the banners that we, the holiday banners. Interesting, they'll also be installing four Frost Centers, sensors, throughout the town. I guess these Frost will measure, the sensors will measure the temperature of the roads and then signal, send a signal off to the DPW to help them sort of schedule their salting operations. They'll also be out there working with Abington Celebrates. Apparently, we have some new holiday decorations for the upcoming big weekend. Town meeting had authorized borrowing for up to $100,000 for this equipment, but I'm glad to announce that John was able to get us a reliable, slightly-used truck for $65,000.
Good job, John.
Yeah. And these trucks are workhorses, so it's, it's good. It's been a while that they haven't had one, so I'm glad we finally got that taken care of. This Wednesday, November 30th, at 7:00 PM, Finance Committee will meet in this room. This is kind of a start off to the FY '24 budget process. This week's meeting will be just an overview of the process, explanation of the town's revenue sources, a discussion on how we come up with our expenses and put our budgeting together, reviewing our long- and short-term borrowing, and then setting the schedule for the budget season. Tonight was kind of the kickoff for this board. We will be, you know, Adam was the first, and I guess alphabetically, he comes first, but bringing our department heads to give you an operational update. Some of them will give you a broad overview of their current budget situation and requests for next year. Others will just come in and sort of let you know what's been going on in their department. The only other thing to mention, or a couple other things to mention, one is the, a lot of calls and comments on our energy aggregation program. So just wanted to mention, you know, this, some people think that this is something that we just all of a sudden decided to do, however, this is something that the town had entered into back in 2019.
2017, I think.
Well, I think it initially, the initial request was 2017. They went out to bid, they had meetings on it. A vendor was contracted with in 2019. It was a three-year contract with options for renewal, so we're in that contract period. And I think at one or two points in time, that they did actually successfully come up with some savings that they put out to the town. This is the first time that they've had anything since I've been on, and it seems to, you know, again, in reaction to what we are hearing, are going to be some pretty significant rate increases in January. We felt that this was the best thing to do for the whole of the community. That being said, we do have all of the information for this up on the website. If anybody's having trouble, feel free to reach out. There's some contact numbers on our website, and there's also some links. But on our next meeting on December 12th, representatives from Colonial Power Group will be here. You know, so they'll be able to answer any questions directly, which I think will be very helpful to have them here. And they'll go over the process and, you know, we can certainly have a further discussion on it then.
Thank you, Scott. I know, I know, I've, I don't know about you guys, but I know I've definitely heard from a lot of residents, just, so, thank you, Scott. I know there was one thing that I also wanted to clarify, because I got a few phone calls about it. Residents asking about the notification that went out. And residents were questioning whether it should be an opt-in or an opt-out. According to the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, the process is that residents have to opt-out, not opt-in.
Right, that's not an Abington thing.
Yeah, it's not an Abington thing, it's a Massachusetts thing. So that's why, I know that some people were confused or concerned, or whether or not it's, oh, should it be opt-in or opt-out? No, according to the state, we are, we are following opt-out.
And we're, you know, and we're cognizant that, you know, it's a, it's a long-term thing, so at times, the rate is going to be lower, and if we do see that the rates are kicking up and it's no longer favorable, we will send out, just through probably code red emails and on our website, just alerts that, you know, you may want to take a look at your bill and it may be a chance to opt-out, because you don't have to, you can opt-out at other times.
Can you opt-in after you opt-out?
We would have to, that would be a question for Colonial.
There are, if, it's available to all Abington residents, but you, if, so, if you're not in the program right now, you can opt-in. There's a number that you can call to opt-in.
Yeah, so the, the notification went out to people who are currently just basic. Yeah, so the, the notification went out to people who are currently just basic-rate subscribers through N-Star or through.
National Grid.
National Grid. So, meaning that if, if you've already picked somebody else you, for your supplier.
Correct.
You likely did not get this in the mail, and you don't have to do anything if you're happy with your supplier. One thing, another interesting thing that we'll go over when Colonial's here at your next meeting, is that there is a link, and there is a website out there that would allow you, if you just want to go in, look at what is available to you in your area code, or for the, obviously for Abington, for all the different suppliers that you can avail yourself of. There's maybe a dozen or so with different rates and different terms. You don't have to go with this one, you could pick your own. You're welcome to shop, and, and again, we'll, I think it's best to explain that when we have Colonial here.
And just for people watching at home, if you didn't get the letter, if you wanted to opt-in to the program, I have the number right up here. You can call eight-six-six-nine-six-eight-eight-zero-six-five and ask to join the Abington's program. And we're, you know, just for residents, we are doing this to, we know that, you know, we're, we're going into some financial difficult times, and we don't know, you know, what energy costs are going to be like. This is an, an effort by the town of Abington to help relieve any burden that could come our way.
Very good.
Anything else?
I just want to congratulate the new, the newly-appointed Sergeant Sanders.
Yes.
They had a badge pinning on.
Wednesday.
Wednesday afternoon. I don't know who does that late on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, but they did it, it was exciting, and I was glad I was part of it, so congratulations.
He's been on for quite a while.
Yeah, you know, and it's nice to see, he has a great resume.
Yeah.
Some time in the Air Force, I believe it was. And it's just nice to see that these, you know, that these men and women are getting into some leaders, leadership positions. It's great to see the new faces coming on board today. Very positive direction that I see the department going in, so it's all very exciting.
And they're from Abington.
And they're from Abington.
It's nice to see Abington faces, yes.
Which is great to see.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Scott, the Center and North School, I mean, we're still plowing, sanding, salting, maintenance there. I mean, is there anything we could cut costs on any of that stuff?
I'll ask John Stone. I think it's mostly, you know, we always want, you know, emergency access to the building.
Okay. I just, I can imagine it's probably a lot of, you know, man-hours to, to do it, so.
Yeah, I'll check with him and see if there's any, any savings, but again, it's, the Fire Department needs to have access all the, throughout the winter.
Okay.
We have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim?
Keep going.
I'll be in favor.
All right, unanimous. Thank you all. We'll see you December twelfth.